Okay, first item, I'll calling it to order. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. First item of business is the appointment of Linda Chekola. Is that right? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Thanks, sounds right.
BMS Teachers Union Rep., Insurance Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2018.
Motion to appoint.
Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next request is a request for release of town council opinion on snowplow duties with respect to overtime pay. I don't see any issue with this. It is, you know, it's an opinion that went to the town. There's no, not a matter of litigation or anything like that. So, I would certainly recommend that we release this.
Okay. Do we need a motion? Are we in agreement?
Yeah.
Motion to release town council's opinion on the snowplow duties.
Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Yes. We have a response to, I'm just looking at the time because this might take a couple of minutes, but we have a few minutes. A response to a citizen inquiry about leashing and dogs at Gate Pond Reservoir. Mary and Chief Galvin had talked, and this is something we've addressed a number of times, and that this is, I think their understanding of things is correct, that this is, this is land that is owned by the town of Hudson. And as the owner of the land and the manager of the land, they do have the, you know, right and ability to limit use. I mean, they could, they could, as you see with many public water supplies, limit access completely if they, if they want it. Berlin is, and Berlin for that matter, if we own land, like conservation land, we can establish, you know, rules and regulations for lands that we own that may be different, you know, with respect to dogs or anything else from the general, you know, Berlin bylaws. But we don't own this land. So it seems to me the only way that we could affect this land ourselves is to adopt a leash law generally in Berlin. Because again, it doesn't fit in the category of land that Berlin owns.
Well, would that even?
That wouldn't help either, would it?
Yes, it would indeed. Because, yes, I think that would. Because it's a leash law that applies, you know, and it is sort of a public access land. I believe we could, but it, you know, we would have to at least do that. And you're right, there might even be some questions with regard to that.
Yeah, if it's not, that's still, if Hudson doesn't have a leash law, then it's still their property, right?
Yeah, it's their property, but it's within Berlin and, you know, it is public access. It's a gray area, you know, I mean, we'd have to, but what I'm saying is we have no, no opportunity to even argue we have, unless we had a leash law in town.
Let me ask a question. The sign does say to leash the dogs within 400 feet.
Yes.
But I, so would it be Hudson's duty to enforce that?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
They could ask our police to take notice and we, you know, like, you know, like people have for trespassing signs, you know, but it is primarily their, it's their reserve. It appears to be their rule.
It sounds to me that maybe a bigger sign that says, you know, for 400 feet from the water, you know, leash your dog or whatever.
I'm actually, yeah, I'm actually surprised they don't because, I mean, you know, the problems that they had around Waukesha, I mean, years, years ago, it would have been in the 90s, because I remember we had our Yorkshire Terry or Bruce. When we first had him, you could walk him down around the Waukesha reservoir. But sometime, I believe in the late 90s or early 2000s, they, they forbade dogs around, you know, Waukesha for the reason of water clotting, you know, and obvious reasons. So, I am a bit surprised, admittedly it's a backup water supply, but I'm a bit surprised they're not more concerned about that.
Right.
Isn't that because of terrorism concerns too?
That they didn't allow dogs?
No.
No, you can still wa, what I'm talking about is walking, you know, around in the wooded areas. Access to the dam was different, but, you know, at the time, you know, until, as I say, late 1900s, early 2000s, you could walk dogs in, you know, in the reserve area, but not anymore. So, I think this response is correct. I mean, I, one of the questions is, do, we should certainly copy this to Hudson because there seemed to be some confusion on Hudson's part. And I would say we have been around the block on this, you know, a couple of times.
Okay.
You know, it comes up about every six or seven years. So, you know, I mean, I think this is correct. We don't have the ability to regulate there. Hudson does. Hudson apparently has that regulation, but they're not enforcing it.
Do you want me to send that on behalf of the board from the selectman's email account? Or do you want it to be a letter?
I think let's do a letter.
You want a letter?
And, don't you think?
You could do both.
Yeah, we can do both.
You can do the email and then follow it up with the paper copy.
And I would, I would copy, if you could and you guys agree, I would copy the selectman and town manager for the town of Hudson, and if you can get it, the water, the Public Works, whoever's in charge of the water supply.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any power to do anything, but for my purposes, I think if they have the rule, it should be enforced. And I know when I used to walk dogs down there, it, I always had one on a leash and it was always a hassle, or frequently a hassle, when people didn't have them on a leash, you know. It's quite intensely used.
It's very much more busy than it used to be, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have lots of conservation land that people can walk their dogs on without leash, you know, that's less intensely used. Anyway. All right? We done, we okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Okay, then, we have attorney.
Do you want me to sign a letter? Or do you want Tom to sign? You're going to be around, well, I'll see you tomorrow. I'll do it for tomorrow.
Okay.
Then, we have attorney Andrew Upton coming to talk to us regarding a liquor license for the Solomon Pond movie theater. This is Lisa. I think she was not here the last time you came.
Nice to see you.
I'm not sure if I was either. Hi, I'm Chris.
Andrew.
And Tom, Andrew, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
All right.
So, I am Andrew Upton. I'm the liquor license attorney for Regal Cinemas in Massachusetts, and I have come to get your feedback and perspective on the possibility of a liquor license at the movie theater. I usually like to take an hour to 90 minutes to go through this, but I understand you're on a bit of a quicker schedule, so I'll see if I can speed it up. So, just flipping through this briefly, Regal is a very large exhibitor and movie theater chain. They have, this information's actually a little dated, they have close to 600 movie theaters right now, and they serve alcohol at about 100. So, typically when we do an application, which I know is not the case here, we start out with the, sort of the public need. And I'll just give you sort of a background of what we think the public need, the common good, the public convenience is. It's basically that movie theaters are doing everything they possibly can to compete in the entertainment space. It's hard to get people out of their house when you can watch almost any movie you want on your phone, on your watch, on your television. And in order to survive, movie theaters are trying to get more and more of an experience of amenities for the customers, and better food and drink is a big part of it. Regal has liquor licenses in Taunton, in Boston, and in Lanesboro. These were approved by the ABCC, some as much as two years ago. They've been up and running for some time. There's very good customer satisfaction and no incidents or violations. In Massachusetts, I believe AMC has nine liquor licenses, and there are all sorts of independent theaters in Cambridge, Somerville, Arlington, Newton. There's probably about 25 movie theaters that serve alcohol in Massachusetts. In the United States, there are hundreds and hundreds. I can tell you that we have already met with Representative the Mall, who is very much in favor of this. Feels it will drive customers, drive spending, keep the movie theater economically vibrant. We met with the Marlboro Economic Development officials and their licensing board and the police department, all of whom are favorable towards this. As you probably know, the line goes right through the movie theater. So, Berlin has, I would say, 95% of it, and Marlboro has like a little square off to the edge.
Yep.
I've also spoken to Mr. Hoffmann of the Economic Development Committee. He is building some type of walls to protect against the storm surge in Texas right now, so he couldn't be here. But we started some discussions about involving him and getting his support.
Okay.
So, that's sort of how we see the public need. The other thing we usually talk about is the character and fitness of the applicant. And I've touched on that, I think, a little bit. This is a national exhibitor. They have a great track record operating, almost 100 liquor licenses nationwide. They have an extensive alcohol control plan that they use at every theater. That's on page two. And it seems to work quite well, although these are not necessarily written in stone. Typically, we meet with people in the community, people at the theater, people in law enforcement, and sometimes they say, you know, "We don't like this part. We'd like you to do a little more of that." So, you know, we are willing to work with people to make sure we get the best possible And one very positive thing about compliance at the movie theaters when they serve alcohol is what we call the nature of the movie-going experience. Unlike when you're out to dinner, or watching a game, or at a bar, people typically don't get up from the movie theater. So, they'll have a drink beforehand, they'll bring a drink to their seat, but a very, very small percentage of people leave their seat because there's no, there's no halftime, there's no injury timeout, there's no advertisements.
And there's no pause button.
Right. If you, if you get up, you're going to miss something.
Yeah.
So, do some people get up and have a second drink? Yeah, they do, but it's probably 10% of those that get a first drink. And it also makes it a lot easier for our people to notice if someone is trying to get more than they should, because unlike at a crowded bar, if you see the same person coming back and forth, there's probably not too many like him or her doing this.
I do note, at least by appearance, that when you go there, many of the people at the concession stands are, of course, minors, so, you know, presumably that this affects your staffing and.
It definitely does. I mean, state law says you have to be over 18 to serve alcohol.
Yeah.
You can be under 18 to move the boxes and stuff.
Yeah.
But we like to have trained people over 18, and typically we'll have a small, I brought, this isn't the greatest representation, but this is Taunton before they put in the bar. So, as you can probably imagine from the concession stand, it's probably, you know, probably 20 times this big.
Yeah.
So, it's typically a 10 to 12 foot section. There'll be, you know, some taps here, some bottles here, a little refrigerators back And they like to have it a little bit isolated from, you know, candy, gum, and popcorn, because, you know, it's easier to control service, and also, you know, you want to keep people who shouldn't be asking for liquor away from there.
Okay.
So, on the alcohol control plan, you can see, there's always a manager. Unlike a bar, we ask every person for ID. So, if I go to the movies with my wife and I pop out of the theater and I say, "Can I have two glasses of wine?", they will say, "No." They say, "You have to show one ID for each person that buys." Because a concern, of course, is that someone will buy two and bring one back and give it to someone who shouldn't have it. So, in order to prevent that, we make everyone come out, show their ID if they want to get it. Staff monitors the theaters. We have an extensive alcohol training program. Sometimes we do wristbands, so people are IDed, clipped, makes it easier to see who's doing it. You can't get two drinks at a time, as I said, even if you're one person. We have detail, police, and other security. And we have, you know, we seek a lot of feedback from the patrons in terms of calling in to the customer number or reporting to the management. And that's mostly because if you have some rowdy people in the theater, you know, whether they're on the phone, or yelling, or someone's intoxicated, or whatever, it ruins it for everyone else.
Yeah.
And we'd like to get rid of them as soon as we can, because we'd rather deal with one person than 199 other upset customers.
Yeah.
So, that tends to work pretty well. The other thing worth mentioning is they're already experienced in age-restricted sales there, because there's constantly people trying to get in to our rate of movies. So, they're, you know, they have sort of a background and experience checking the IDs. Once they do the training and tips training, it'll be more extensive, but they're not starting from ground zero. So, as I said, Regal's got a lot of these. They're doing good. They haven't had any violations. Part of it, I think, is that they're a good citizen, have good compliance. The other part of it is the nature of the movie-going experience. People aren't there to really party and hang out, because otherwise you'd miss the movie.
Okay.
So, most of the theaters that I've been to who serve alcohol only serve beer and wine. And I know you're looking for a full license. Is that pretty normal with the way that things are going, or?
It is. All of AMC's are all alcohol. Two out of three Regals are all alcohol. The one that isn't in all alcohol is in Boston, because an all alcohol license costs $400,000. And they decided not to do it. The trend is to have all alcohol, and there's two, two major reasons. One is sometimes the studios create like the marketing tie-in cocktail, the Spider-Man, you know, cocktail, whatever. They sell it in commemorative glass. The other is the research.
The vodka martini.
Right, James Bond. The other is that the research has shown when there's a group or a family, that if one person can't get what they want, if the grandmother wants Scotch, or the husband wants vodka, that they will cancel the whole trip.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the second reason, the sort of consumer demand. Spirits is a relatively low component of the volume, but it's part of the marketing and the whole concept, so they like to have it.
Okay, she asked the question I did.
Okay.
As far as, I didn't think that hard alcohol would be something that would be a big seller.
It's not a huge seller, but there's enough demand and enough problems if people don't, if they don't have it, that they hear from the customers.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I've certainly been in theaters that have full alcohol licenses. Very common in the UK and Europe and so on, and it is part of just going out. Well, let me have people go around. What's people's immediate reaction to this?
I know theaters are having trouble. You know, it seems like a way to help the business continue, so, I guess, other than, you know, being a little iffy about the hard alcohol thing, it makes a certain amount of sense.
I feel, I feel similarly, and you want to keep the business going over there.
Yeah. And I would say, you know, me too. I think we have to be flexible in terms of that, obviously. The mall is something, you know, that there are, it's a changing environment, and, you know, making it more of an event thing than pure retail is one of the things that certainly I see nationally and so on, and I think we have to be flexible in that regard. For my part, you know, whether it's alcohol or beer, you know, I mean, you can get, you know, one 12 or 16 ounce beer, or you can get, you know, an ounce and a half of Scotch, and you're drinking the same amount of alcohol, you know. It's just, if the thing is appropriately controlled, it's, to me, it's appropriately controlled.
I can tell you, if it's of interest, that they typically charge what they call street prices, so the cost of a beer or a glass of wine will be similar to what you'd pay in a restaurant. So, there's no, you know, there's no pitchers, there's no two-for-ones, there's no shots, there's no, you know, kind of dollar beers or anything like that.
Okay.
Well, I think if what you were looking for was a positive indication for the selectmen on this, that you got that.
Well, thank you.
Agreed.
Correct?
Yeah.
So, I, I think the next phase from our perspective would be, you know, do some paperwork. You know, I would, I would come to the next hearing with the proposed manager of record, maybe with the regional vice president, so they could, you know, tell you a little more, answer more detailed questions if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
That's splendid.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for keeping it brief, but I think we've accomplished what we needed to.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we start the tax classification hearing, I noticed Mr. Litchwell, if you're here, are you here for the inspector's fees issue?
Yes.
Okay. Let us take a couple of minutes just to see if we can deal with that, so you don't have to sit through the tax classification hearing, unless you're fascinated by that. Last time we had, you know, we did have a discussion. I think we were sort of ready to make a decision, but we had moved it up in, in the agenda for scheduling purposes. And we wanted to see if anybody showed up at the appointed hour for that discussion to see if there was, you know, any other input on it, and indeed, there was not. So, I think we might be ready to, to vote on accepting that. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I would take a motion in that regard.
Where are we? Motion to approve the revised building inspector permit fee schedule.
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay.
Now, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And we are still right on time for you guys. All right. You want to come on up? As many of you who'd like to?
My board pointed out a typo, so made you a new copy of one of the pages at the end.
Okay. How are you all this evening?
Good.
It's great.
All right, well, 7:30, and we will open up the property tax classification hearing for the fiscal year 2018. And if I might first, I'd like to compliment you, Molly and the assessors, for the clarity and sound of this presentation. I thought I was very busy over the weekend. I had my elderly father with me, so I ended up, you know, doing my homework after about 4:30, and this was good material. It was easy to go through, and so I thank you.
Good. The easier the better, so.
Yeah. Would you like to begin?
Sure. Tonight, tonight is the selectman's opportunity to set the tax rate policy for the town. There's four things that you're going to be looking at, is a uniform or a split tax rate, an open space discount, a residential exemption, or a small commercial exemption. And there's, so, you split the rate, you're either, if you have a uniform rate, everyone has the same tax rate. When you split it, depending on what the split is, the residential has one tax rate, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property has another tax rate. The open space, a while back, the town voted to have chapter land be classified as open space, and that's the only property that we have classified as open space, so you don't, so you don't have to, well, you have to take a vote to do nothing on that one. Residential exemption, Berlin's a.
And just to be clear, we have that open space discount in place for Chapter 61A or 61B.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the residential exemption, Berlin is mostly an owner-occupied community. The only people who really split their rates are heavily vacation property and big cities that have tons of apartments.
Yeah, and we do not have this exemption currently.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the small commercial exemption, you voted for a 10% shift since 2016. So, you have the four classes of property, residential, open space, and then commercial, industrial, and personal property.
Mm-hmm.
And I gave you an example of the total town value. We did lower, the sales showed that the town dropped about 1%. The whole town, not individual properties, just.
On the residential?
Yeah, well, on the commercial, a little too.
Okay.
But the value.
But the commercial is calculated on a different basis.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And, but the total town went up because of the growth. We had more growth, growth this year than we anticipated, because the Highland Commons started to sped up their building.
Yeah.
And a couple of other little things that have lost.
Okay, so just so, I'm sure I understand that. You say that the valuation of residential and the valuation of commercial went down, which would have resulted in a 1% reduction.
Right.
Of our tax base, but that was offset.
By the growth, which was just about 1%. So, it sort of evened itself out in the end.
Okay, okay. Great, all right.
And, so, our levy by classification is the residential and open space is at 74.06%. And the commercial, industrial, and personal property is at 25.94. So, 74 to 26 is how.
So, this is the raw ratios of the valuation of each of those categories.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you did a 20, I just gave you a couple of examples in this format.
Yes.
And Kevin, thanks to Kevin, who thought that having this, the effect with the shift made it easier.
I loved it.
So, if you shift.
That's what, that's where we kind of ran off the road last time.
Right.
Yes, I appreciate that.
It's clear.
Yeah.
It's associated, it's one little package.
Yeah.
So, the 25% shift would be, residential would be at 67.5, and commercial would be at 32.43. And the tax rate, the tax rates would go down from 1585 to 1537, and 2421 to 2116, which is an average, on an average single-family house, that would be about 189 in tax dollar in a decrease, and on the average CNI assessments, about 5,000. But it's very hard to. But it's very hard to do average commercial, industrial, because you have the malls at 53 million.
Yeah, totally. I understand. Just so, so therefore, people looking at their tax bills today are going to look at, or this next year, are going to really be looking at two effects, it seems to me. One is if the value of the property went down relative to the total valuation of the town, they're going to see some effect from that. Because the values, let's say, on average, went down 1%, but we actually have a higher valuation than last year because of new values. So somebody, you know, who's hit in an average sort of way by that, are going to see some benefits from the fact that their relative percentage of value in the town has decreased. All right.
And then I gave you the 30% shift, which would be 66 and 34. And again, the values would be dropping even more.
That's at the 30% shift?
Yep. And then 34 is what you had set it at last year. And that's even, you know, if you keep shifting, the rates keep going down, so.
Yep.
And then the, I, this is the, this sheet here is the one that the Department of Revenue has, and you can, it will go from 1 to 150.
Yep.
I sort of did 1 to 150, but cut out the, all of them, just shortened it up to- show if you did that. And then on this comparative tax rate sheet, this is, I did the highest, the average, the median, and then the lowest, so that you could see how the effect is going to be on all the properties, depending on where your property lies within that.
Yep.
For both the commercial and the industrial. And then this was the, I think, I did this spreadsheet for you last year. You wanted to see where the evening off point was. So that's what that spreadsheet, I just followed it through.
Okay.
And then when I, then this just shows personal property, because when you, when you do the 10% small commercial exemption, it pushes that off of personal property and onto the other commercial and industrial-
Right.
-in that rate. So it's pennies-
Yep.
...a difference, but just wanted you to be able to see that. And then the percent of class history. So when you started doing the split, and the percent, and I added the adopted percentage, so you've gone, it's gone up to 134. The lowest in the first year was 5%. So it's, it's been around 30% would be maybe the average middle, I don't know what to call it, most median.
Okay.
And then the only other thing is that June and Dennis and I were discussing that next year, we still have one more year for the debt exclusion on this building, and then the highway barn will be coming on, so it'll be a two, it'll be like a double hit for one year. And then the year after, this building will be done paid for, and then you'll just have the highway barn.
Right.
So.
Okay.
And on the small commercial exemptions, there's 31 properties this year. And that includes seven new ones. So people, people come off and go on, which I never, well, this is the only town I've ever worked in with, so.
Can we look at that personal property page? Because that was one that I was having a little trouble following, actually. First of all, what is the little block to the side?
That's, I guess I should have taken that single-family stuff out of there. Sorry.
Yeah, I was confused about that. I was confused about who was going to get to that. Yep.
I need somebody to-
So explain to me, because it's, I really was puzzled by this page, so. I mean, then there'll probably be people-
Nope, go ahead.
Okay.
Actually-
I mean, I hate to bore people if I'm the only one who's confused, but all right.
That's okay. I don't know what I did to this sheet.
Listen.
I guess I put it in and then didn't update it. So ignore that.
But that doesn't make sense.
No, right.
It shouldn't be going up.
Right. The, so the average personal property was 88.6.
Yes.
So at the 17%, the tax rate would be 1971. I don't, this must have been one of the times that I was, before they had all the numbers in, because these numbers, those tax rates are not right at all.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I thought, you know, I thought I was at lunch that I couldn't understand, so.
So the commercial at the 17% would be 1981, and the personal property would be 1971. And just going down, it would be 2116 versus 2106, and 2201 versus 2119.
Where are we now?
Well, you don't have it, but yes, you do. If you go to this page that has the DOR, what if?
Okay. Okay. I'm there. It's the back of about two or three pages.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's absolutely fine. I hope you, I hope you're taking this compliment, that I read your materials and try to-
Over here on the estimated tax rates, there's what the difference would be. So.
Okay.
Okay. I put that in, and I totally forgot that all the numbers changed a couple of times.
Okay.
And we still haven't pushed the button that says, that changes the pennies and cents.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And, so when I'm looking at this. All right. I'm sorry, I'm still confused.
That's okay.
Yep. I guess what I'm trying to get at is what, what do the rates look like? With the, yeah, the personal property, small, commercial exemption.
It's, it's only pennies that-
Okay.
The personal property just gets a separate tax rate than the-
Right. And then that gets shifted onto the other commercial?
Right, so.
Okay. But your calculations of the differences included all the 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then I don't, I guess I don't have to understand how the sausage was made then particularly, as long as, as we're sure that-
Yes, I included the 10%.
Okay. So when I see the delta, and again, looking, I understand, looking at the averages of commercial is very difficult, because there is no average. But that, that includes the shift-
Yes.
-and the personal tax exemption?
Yes.
Okay.
So it seems like a complicated one this year. It seems complicated this year.
Actually, it seems simpler to me this year than it was last year. But of course, we also had the revale last year. As I said, that was the first time we'd had a revale and the split rate at the same time, so. I find it a challenge. Okay. Well, if I may, start. Last year, we went, and you can see from the history, we went up quite high in terms of the commercial-residential shift. And we did that. We did that because of the fact that there had been a revaluation, and that revaluation had pushed the values. This year, certainly, we don't have that kind of year-to-year shift. As a matter of fact, commercial would probably have-
Commercial, the only, the reason that it went up was because of all the buildings. The value stayed, basically.
Yeah, the value stayed pretty stable.
Flat.
Yep. Housing went down slightly. And we have new, new growth. So we don't see any huge percentage shift, you know, away from commercial into residential this year, the way we did see, you know, a considerable shift last year-
Right.
-because of the revaluation. So this, in fact, makes this a little simpler, because we're not, you know, we're not dealing with a major change at that level as well. My, you know, my sort of immediate feeling is to keep it where it is. Again, I think we're sort of absorbing that, you know, that shift of valuation from, you know, commercial to housing. And so I think, whereas I know that, because I heard from them, that many residential taxpayers wished we had done more of a shift last year, because, you know, to help to accommodate that shift in value. And we'd already set the rates, but I think one of the things that we can do to help to correct that is to extend that, that shift a year. So I'm sort of inclined to keep it. Whereas when I look at, when I look at the effect year-to-year of that 34% shift, and again, this is on the average family. And for people who may be watching, the average single-family valuation is within a spitting distance of $400,000. And the difference in tax payment on that, if we adopt, if we maintain the 34% shift, would be within a spit of $400, 399 and change. Because valuation has gone up because of new growth and because of, you know, we spent what we spent, the, even with a 34% shift, the quote-unquote "average", you know, assessment for commercial would also go down a small amount. So, you know, it seems to me that that's not a bad way to go, but-
I was sort of in agreement, but I actually thought maybe even a slightly larger shift, since the residential took so much of the burden last year. And either way, the commercial goes down.
Okay.
So my thought was maybe even bump that a little bit further.
All right.
Just remember that they're probably going to go up next year.
Next year, yeah, but you can still sort of balance out, you know.
Well, yes, because we're going to be spending more.
Well, plus also the-
Charging more this year doesn't help with the next year.
Debt exclusion. No, I'm just saying that.
Right. Yeah, we have a debt, we have a debt exclusion, and we're spending, you know, I mean, effectively, we're spending more, because, so it's not so much that the mechanics of the tax allocation changes, it just means that we will have one year of double debt service. And so we're going to have a spike in tax payment. Of course, we're going to be setting a rate for that, you know.
Right, next year, right.
Sorry. It is 2018-
We're doing right now.
That we're doing, and it is 2019, we're going to have that double debt spike. Yep, I just wanted to be sure. Yeah, and then that's, that doesn't have to do particularly with the mechanics of taxes or valuation. That's just because we spend more, we have the double. Okay. And do you have a more specific suggestion?
I was thinking more like 37 or 38, to put it sort of balanced with what the increase was last year.
Tell me what page we were on for that.
Okay, so if you look at the one from last year, the increase was 10%. And it went up about almost $600. That's the one from last year, right there.
I didn't put, that's not in your packet?
Yes, this is the one that probably gave me from last year.
Oh, okay.
So this is about how much it went up last year. It went up about 10% for residential. And it went up, it went only 3% for commercial. So my thought was that we could find a number that was closer to this number, which would bump us up a little bit further. It's actually in between these, right here, which is why I threw out 37, 38, because it's about right here, if you want to get closer to this number. And then either way, your commercial tax rates go down by a lesser amount, but they still, I mean, if I was commercial, I wouldn't be complaining, because they still go down. And they didn't take the hit last year.
So 37% of the, the tax rate would be 1466. And 38 would be 1460 residential, I'm sorry, let me finish that. 1466 at 37 for residential, and 2319 for commercial. And then the 38% would be 1460 for residential, and 2336 for-
2336, you said?
2336.
36, yep, okay. Sorry, I was writing down the other one. Okay?
Yeah, and these are like last year would have been 2421 for commercial, and 1585 for residential.
Okay. And so the first one was 37, the next one was 38. Okay. I don't have any strong objections to doing that.
Does this make sense? Does it sound like I know what I'm talking about? Because I don't, you know.
What's the drawback of doing that?
You're giving a very reasonable testimony, knowing what you're talking about. No, that's purpose.
I'm asking the experts here, because I think I understand this, and if I don't, God, please tell me now.
Yeah.
Well, would you?
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
How do you feel about that?
I agree. I was going to say, it's got to either, I, my feeling was it either needed to go down a bit for residential, because it hit last year.
Yeah, which is what we, I mean, it's going to go down anyway, obviously, but it, this makes it go down a little more, you know.
Okay. And just for the viewing audience, in the following year, like a little bit higher.
And again, that is, that is because we are spending more.
Yes.
And the extent to which, you know, we have reserve fund or, you know, I mean, it's very difficult-
Yes, it is.
-to say, but we are spending more for one year because of the double debt service, so.
So forgive us, we're helping you this year, forgive us next year.
Right, that's what I mean.
Okay. Okay, well, 37 or 38?
I don't have that paper, apparently.
Well, did-
Well, this one is last year.
Yeah, this is-
Did you run this off at home?
I wasn't sure.
Yes, I ran it off at home.
All right.
Yeah, because I had to study this afternoon. So-
Which one gets me closest to this number, 37 or 38?
Can I have the calculator?
Oh, of course you can.
I should have figured it out, I'm sorry, I should have figured it out.
I was just going to do it myself, so, yeah.
Wish I was running for reelection this year. What's that? Wish I was running for reelection this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. Exactly. Yeah.
What I did for you.
Exactly.
No pitchforks this year.
Well, they'll come for you next year though. They know when you meet and where you meet, so.
I'll be out.
Thomas will be running for reelection, so it's going to look good for you.
Huh?
It'll look good for you.
Yeah. Maybe I could walk for reelection. All right.
So the thirty-seven percent, the average would be fifty-nine, fifty-seven ninety-three ninety.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So that's fifty-seven ninety.
And the commercial would be thirty-eight, three thirty-five fifty. And then the. Fifty-seven seven one ten. Sorry, this is my, not my calculator. Thirty-eight, six one six four five oh.
Okay, so the differential would be.
My calculation of the differential for the average single-family house from fiscal year two thousand seventeen would be four ninety-four oh six at that higher rate. That's all I did was to take the, did you say five seven seven oh?
Okay.
Right?
It'd be five seventy-one forty-six.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that makes more sense, because it's got to be between these two numbers.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm just looking for the one that's closest to that five eight nine.
Gotcha, okay. But, sorry, you said it would be five seven seven oh ten? Is that the figure you gave?
That was the, that was the one thirty-eight. I'm sorry, I just gave the.
That was the one thirty-eight.
Yep.
Okay. So it's, it's the thirty-eight.
That's five ninety-five twenty-six. I'm sorry, I was, I'm in my own little world over here.
Okay.
The five seventy-one forty-six is the thirty-seven.
Okay.
Yep.
And the five ninety-five twenty-six is the thirty-eight.
Okay. So, yeah, it's probably thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight? Okay, I'll take a motion for thirty-eight. Thirty-eight going once, going twice.
Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Just again, thank you very much for.
Wait.
Yep.
We have to do all four of them.
Oh, we need to do that, we need to decide we're doing a split rate.
Right.
Then you're going to, you're going to do the small commercial.
Yeah, no, no, I was going to do the four, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were sending us away already.
But once we get rolling, you know, we're going to do four votes and you're out of here, you know, so.
All right.
Okay. So then we are adopting with the thirty-eighty rate of.
Well, you're not really adopting.
A thirty-eight percent shift.
You're doing the thirty-eight percent shift.
The vote on the thirty-eight percent shift.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You can go to dump again.
Yeah, really. Okay. A vote on maintaining the open space discount.
So moved.
Second.
So you're just voting to keep it as.
Yes.
You're not voting an open space discount, you're just keeping.
We're doing nothing.
Yep.
Right, but.
Yep.
We, each year we have to vote it, you know, but it, yes, you're right, it makes no change, we have one now, but we're voting to maintain the open space discount.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would accept a vote not to adopt a residential exemption. This is again, consistent with what we already have.
Mm-hmm. So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A vote to adopt a small commercial exemption?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Again, this is something that we have in place that we're, okay, I'll take a vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Just, you voted the ten percent, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ten, yes, ten percent shift.
So then I just have this nice piece of paper for you to sign, the signatures go on the second page.
Okay.
But I had to handwrite it in because until everybody's set with their numbers and the D O R says, okay, the button hasn't been pushed. So that, that rate of seven, fourteen sixty might change by pennies, but the thirty-eight percent split will still be what you're going on. Thank you. Very nice meeting with you.
Yes, indeed, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're timed.
See you at the dump.
Yeah, really?
Close the, should you close the hearing, I'm sorry.
Sure. Close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, I think I swept my agenda from here. All right, I'll take, I'll take a look at that, I think I swept it into all these.
I don't think we have too much left here.
No, we don't?
Yep. School departments, surplus and.
Yeah, well, actually, they never did give photos or anything like that, so.
So.
Don't know if you feel like the selectmen need to. Um, you were saying that you believe that the selectmen do still weigh in on a school surplus request?
I think they did when I was on school committee.
But he was kind of insinuating that the school committee had voted to surplus these things, and I just wanted to make sure that the board, whatever way the board wants to go, do you want?
Where are these, where, where, where is this material?
V M S desks, chairs.
V M S.
Or broken, in some cases, or obsolete A V equipment.
There was like twenty-five chairs or something and.
Mostly chairs and desks.
They've already voted?
The school committee apparently voted.
The school committee voted.
Okay. I would take a motion to register no objection to the school committee's action with regard to the matter.
Okay, you don't, you don't want to do what we've done with the cable stuff?
No, because here we have another board that is really independent and is making that. Yeah.
All right.
I think we got other things to do, look at pictures of working desks.
Oh, yeah. Believe me, that's fine with me.
I mean, I, we'd love to put them up there on the bulletin board.
The lack of photos is a prayer that they wouldn't have to go through.
Yeah, yeah.
I will make a motion.
I don't want the F B I to raid me because I have broken desk photos on my computer, you know, so, all right.
So motion to throw it away.
A motion to register no objection to the school committee's determination.
Right, no objection, yep.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Yeah. How much time did that take?
Enough.
The last one?
Yeah.
Yeah, indeed. Okay. Let's get to where we were. Let me take a look at that, got it, all right. The next is to issue approval for Charles River Wheelman Bike Event, the morning of September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And the police chief has registered, is okay with this?
Every department.
Every has, okay. I would accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Permission to schedule five meetings for Girl Scout leader meetings at the town offices for two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. And they have given us the dates here?
Yep.
And Mary, you're, okay, we've got space for them and all of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Are they normally having here?
Other groups do soccer leadership meet here.
Boy Scouts.
Cub Scouts actually meet themselves meet here.
Cub Scouts, yes, yep.
Okay, so not at, not at the school?
This is just a leader, this is a leader meeting.
Okay.
But they may actually want to use space in the future for the Girl Scouts themselves, but that's not what this request is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the.
I told you the story about how difficult it is to get into the school, so.
It's just wrong.
Anyway, all right, so.
The same as my town, actually.
I take it that you're not going to use that as an argument for us keeping them out too, though, right?
Oh, goodness. It was just questions. I just don't know, I don't understand why they didn't have huge hearings for.
There you go. Yep, all right, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have just dealt with the next item, which was the revised building inspector permit fee schedule. And on the eighteen seventy Town Hall, we're still preparing a report, we should have the materials together next week. I was doing respiratory care for my dad and can get a chance to finish it this weekend, so. All righty?
Okay.
Okay, any other matters to be brought up in open session?
I had a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
They, there's a library meeting coming up on next Monday. Are you going to be able to make that one, or do you, would you like one of us to step in and?
Um, no, next Monday I should be able to make.
Monday at two P M?
Okay, I should be able to make that, I just, I, I will be able to let you know by tomorrow, but I believe so.
Okay, well, if you don't, can't make it, let us know.
Yeah, okay.
One of us can go.
Okay.
Sounds like they're chomping at the bit to have somebody there.
Yep, okay.
Um, and the highway work on South and Linden Street? Do we know how that's going to proceed?
I'm talking to Carolyn tomorrow to see what's going on on their end.
For the hearing that didn't have enough people?
That didn't happen, that didn't have forum, so I'll ask her what happened and.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Let us know.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
We didn't take any action on the A C G's invoice, correct?
No.
Nope, okay.
And we're not until we sort that out, yeah.
Till we sort it out, okay.
Yep.
All right, that was it.
How about you? I just have one item. This is with respect to Fran Gill and the Berlin Food Pantries item. I thought about this when I was on vacation, I think I have a solution to the problem. This is, yeah, this is the situation where you have donated alcohol.
Oh, okay.
And if you, and Mary and I sat down just before I went away on vacation so I could have all that information composting in my brain while we were away. And basically, with the donated alcohol, we had an issue where they could, it, it could only be purchased from certain wholesalers, and under that kind of license, you were limited to where you could hold the event, to the sort of premises of the.
Nonprofit.
Of the nonprofit, which doesn't really work, okay? Then the, the.
This is, what is this, this is the wine tasting?
Yeah, this is the wine tasting.
Wine tasting they do at the old Town Hall, I don't know whether.
It's going to be ready.
No, but let, let me finish.
I'm just trying to, she's got a look on her face like, what are we talking about?
I'm just following, I'm following.
Yeah, okay. And alternatively, the amount they could, we could just give them a license, the alcohol could be purchased from one of the licensed, the wholesalers, and we'd be done with it. So, thinking about how to put those two things together, I'm fairly certain that that wine is purchased through one of the licensed wholesalers. So I ran the idea by Fran Gill that we could give her a list of those wholesalers, that the people who will be pouring can send her a letter certifying that the liquor was purchased from one of the approved wholesalers, and that they have donated the cost of the liquor. And that way, we can give her the normal one-day license, it will have no location. Now, just, just sort of unofficially, I, I swim in the mornings, I went on the vineyard with a fellow who was a municipal court judge in Boston, but was the former, a former A B C C commissioner. And so one day when we were drying off on the beach, I said, what would you think of this? And he said, no, that seems fine to me. Not that he's the commissioner anymore, but, you know, running it by the, is this too cute test? And he said, no, that, that satisfies the.
The requirements, yeah.
The requirements, so. So I think what we need then to do is to forward to Fran the list of those wholesalers, okay? And I can send to you, Mary, suggestions for, a suggestion for the cover that the people who are donated, the pourers can certify. So I just wanted to let people know that the actual vote on this thing would be, you know, our vote to issue the one-day license, but we were sort of at sixes and sevens on this for quite a while, and Mary and I finally sat down together for what, about forty-five minutes, so I said, Mary, try to sort, I was like, oh, man, you can go this way, you can go that way, but neither one seems quite to, to deal with it, but I think this will bring the two together.
It was fun having company in the maze there for a while.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And listen to all of that, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was, but I think we finally have the solution on that.
Okay, good, all right.
Yeah, because again, we have a certificate that Fran Gill could depend upon, that that liquor was purchased from one of the wholesale. And I thought about it, I mean, you know, I could donate, you know, the money for, you know.
Right.
The cost of the wine, you know, I mean, it doesn't, you know, so.
Right.
Anyway, that, that should work.
Okay.
All right.
Is there any, once it issues, it's issuing to a location, too.
Yes, she has to figure out where that is. I did also say to her, when I spoke to her just before I went away on vacation, that she should not count on the idea that she could do that on the fifteenth of November in the old Town Hall, and I told her that.
Yeah.
I even offered if she wanted to do it at our house, but she said that she was thinking of doing it at Nineteen Carter, so, you know, anyway.
Yeah, because they should, they're, they should be upstairs, should be right by then.
Yeah.
Easily.
Yep. So anyway, she, she is aware of the fact that, that that would be a problem. And she does know that when she does the applications, she has to have that sorted out. But because it's our normal one-day, you know, license, it doesn't have to go to A B C C or anything like that, so there's not a, you know, there's not a long lead time on that at this point.
Well, she could do it at twenty-three Linden Street, too.
She could do it, you know, in any number of places, but my point is that.
Yeah.
Now we know we can do it under the normal one-day license, there's no long lead time on that.
Right.
And she can sort that out, and when she has that location set up, we can issue her the license.
Okay.
Okay? All right. If there is nothing else, then. If there is nothing else, then we do have an executive session. If we go into executive session, we will not be going into open session thereafter.
Just adjourned, right?
Yep, so this is executive session to discuss an employee personnel issue. Andrew, aye?
Keefe, aye.
Waisaki, aye.